Let's not clock straight up here, fellows. Okay. Good morning again, everyone.
Morning.
It, uh, let's try that again. Good morning, everybody. There we go. Make sure everybody's awake. And it is, uh, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. This is a regular meeting, Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas. And today, we have plenty of business on our agenda to fulfill. A lot of this has been in preparation for a number of months. I think, uh, probably about six months, at least on the budget, to get it completed. And that takes some time. And, uh, we've got some that are joining in with us. We'll give that just a minute. Let, uh, Kyle take care of those that want to join in on Zoom. Okay. All right, so.
Commissioner Wilson joining us today?
I don't know. He had a prior engagement that was a necessity that he needed to take care of. The, uh... Give him just a minute, see if there's anyone else who wants to join, so Kyle doesn't have to stop in the middle of what he's doing and punch any buttons. Oh, we do appreciate the job you did. Thank you.
Thanks, you.
Okay, uh, let's, uh, let's all rise. If you would lead us to our pledge this morning.
Yes, sir. Please face the American flag.
Under the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
And if y'all would all pray with me this morning. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. It, uh, it was so, so inspiring. Wake up this morning and walk outside, and the weather was cool. Uh, the sun was out. All the birds were singing. It was just a wonderful morning for us to be able to walk outside and then look at your glory. And thank you so much for that. Lord, for this day, we ask that you be with us. Guide us and direct us as we go through our work. Lord, we hope that, uh, all of our work is always pleasing unto you and for your glory. Lord, be with everyone in the world today. And I hope that they have a good day that we're looking forward to as well. Or please be with the folks in the Caribbean, in Cuba, our friends in Florida that are facing serious storm coming in their direction. And, Lord, I hope that you will be with them and help them through their time. Again, Lord, please be with our nation, our great nation. Be with our state, our county, our cities. Be with our men and women in uniform, our first responders. As always, Lord, please watch over them and always bring them home safely. We ask these things in thy name, in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Well... Oh, see, any notices or proclamations this morning? Maybe I don't believe we got anything in late, did we? Okay. Do we have any public comments this morning? Oh, we had plenty of time for that, but still got my timer here in case we need to borrow it again. Uh, anyone have to declare a conflict of interest today? For being none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Everyone have the opportunity to look over the consent agenda, and are there any add-ons today to the consent agenda?
I have one, and it's a payoff of vacation for Doc Sykes in the election department. The total is one thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Clint is Doc, heading off to be a fireman?
He is. He is going to work for me a little bit, but I hope you check the nineteen, at least when I go to fire school, to get firefighted.
No, bless his heart. I wish him the best.
In addition, I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. I have a motion from Bruce, second grade to approve. If they ever say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may that motion carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to the regular agenda. Um, first one is to consider and approve adopting salaries to be elected officials for the fiscal year 2023. And we went over this earlier this summer, and, uh, and that is on the agenda for your consideration. I have a motion from Greg to approve.
Second.
I have a second from Bruce to approve. All of them say aye. Likewise, may that motion carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two, consider and approve the adoption of the Liberty County budget for the fiscal year September, well, the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And that, uh, I believe it's been posted a lot of while.
I'm going to approve that. Second.
Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may that motion carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, consider and approve adopting the twenty twenty-two tax rate, point four seven nine nine. Let's, uh, we discussed that earlier during our public hearing.
Making motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce, second David to approve. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may that motion carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four, consider and approve the fiscal year 2023 position budget and the twenty twenty-three employee salaries. And that, uh, anybody wants to know, it's twice as thick as it used to be when I first walked in the door.
Making motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Bruce, second David to approve. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may that motion carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, consider and approve the reappointment of Dr. Donnis Callens, Liberty County Health Authority, for a two-year term. As a good doctor, has said that he would be happy to continue serving. We're happy to have him.
Approve.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second David to approve. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may that motion carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six, from Sheriff, consider and approve adding a Liberty County medical charge sheet to be used with Liberty County Sheriff's Office inmates. The Texas Code of Criminal Procedures, one oh four point zero zero two, Section D. A person is or was a prisoner in a county jail and received medical, dental, or health-related services from a county or a hospital district shall pay for such services when they are written. Funds will be subtracted from the inmate's commissary account. Thank you, Sheriff. Would you like to elaborate?
Give Penny some credit too, she got.
Any discussion?
Making motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second grade to approve. All of them say aye. Thank you, Penny. Appreciate it. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you all.
About the only place I know of where you get a good service like that for free is at TDCJ.
We had Matthew and Catherine check over all of it. They actually have very good opinions and everything. They're a star for it.
Thank you, Catherine. Sure thing, Matthew. Yeah. From, uh, number seven, from Commissioner Wilson, consider and approve an interlocal between Liberty County and the city of Dayton for a period of one year to cooperate mutually in maintaining streets, roads, ditches, and recreational areas, provide better service to the public, and reduce expense by avoiding costly duplication of equipment and manpower and other resources, and this is standard in our local agreements between the two entities.
Making motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, David, the second from Bruce. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may that motion carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along to, uh, number eight. Mr. Poston over in the county attorney's office, consider and approve an interlocal agreement by between Mark Hurford, Sheriff and Chief Law Enforcement Officer for Bowe Regard Parish in Liberty County, Texas, for the housing of inmates. I assume this is going to be Bowe Regard Parish in Louisiana. Is that correct?
That's right. It's south of Leesville.
South of Leesville. Okay. Any discussion?
We're through.
Got a motion from Greg, second Bruce to approve. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may that motion carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Now we're going to slow down.
Okay. Harold, good to see you this morning.
How's it going?
Well, really good. Let's just see how the Aggies do Saturday. We looked a lot better this past weekend.
Lot of luck. It worked out.
All right. This is, uh, Commissioner C, our purchasing agent. Discuss take action on health-related insurance for county employees and retirees. Now, there'd be a number of items that we have to touch on today to approve. Number one, which TAC medical and prescription plan, that's one. Number two, confirm move to TAC, which takes association counties for dental vision, decide the disposition of HRA balances. That's the health reimbursement account balances. Number four, premium rates for employees and retirees. Number five, administrator reflects spending, dependent care. Number six, administrator for Cobra coverage. Number seven, insurance for over sixty-five retirees. Number eight, I'm not even saying anything about over sixty-five. Number eight, specify start and end date parameters for employees hired and terminated. Number nine, decide whether to continue MetLife voluntary coverages. Number ten, decide whether to accept, take associate counties life, accidental death, dismemberment, and voluntary life proposal for coverages. And number eleven, any further detail or selections not listed above. So there's a pretty big laundry basket of things for us to go through. Then, Kim, I know you're here to help us. Harold, you're here to help us. We've all had the opportunity to look at these in workshops. Let the discussion and the voting begin.
At the, uh, the original quote we got from TAC, uh, we got numerous quotes from different types of counties. Plan thirteen hundred. Go ahead, yeah, wait a second. Be here.
Okay, now let's try it again.
This is, I'm going to have to scan them in when y'all bring them in, so that's what it was doing.
Okay, this was the, what we discussed in the workshop, the quote that we received from TAC. The original quote was what they call their Plan thirteen hundred. And I mean, y'all have it, I'm just passing it out again, the summary of.
Number two is, uh, so we're going to go down the list?
Yeah, let's go down the list, I guess.
Yeah. That's fine.
Uh, what's the, add dental vision, or add dental vision, which is also, uh, the sun, or also attached, uh, probably the last two pages or the last three or four pages, maybe. So it's all the stuff that we discussed in the workshop last week. And that's, that will be with TAC. I'm not sure what y'all decided on this one, the disposition of the HRA balances. People that are given the money January first, have till December thirty-first to expend it. And, uh, decision is up to y'all, what we're going to do with the balances. Which the money is still, the money's given up to them to use, but it's still the county's money.
So I assume it's not given until, or so you're saying. It's a standard, uh, it carries a cover.
Yeah. So I would say this goes back into the interest fund. Let's live.
What's your recommendation, Kim? Dwayne?
The decision of the court. What I can tell you, that's, that was Joanne Smith's commentary on it, was that when she retired, it was gone. So, you know. It's not, um, it's not like a, like spending, like we deduct from the employee's paycheck. So it's, it's not actually given to the employee upfront for them to be able to, to spend as we deduct their paycheck. It's just, you know, the first dollar the county pays, the deductible, it's just.
I would just like to say that, I won't get sharp, but there's no provisions in the budget for to pay the premiums and roll over the HRA account.
Okay.
One other thing with regard to the HRA is that if you elect to, um, move forward with it, we would have to figure out a, um, system for that. Because TAC does not have that currently built into their plan, so it would add some additional complications for its, um, administrator or having TAC set that up.
So would recommendations be let it just play out at the end of the year?
That's an option.
No HRA.
No, no HRA. And then if we ride along with TAC for a year and see how things are going, and if we actually need an HRA, we come back revisit later, is that something we could consider?
It would, it would remain in place for twenty twenty-two, because, you know, that's all set up and running. But, um, January first, if you elected not to have it, then it would remain not in effect for twenty twenty-three, and then you could revisit it for the twenty twenty-four coverage.
And the reason for it, we have a three thousand deductible amount.
Right.
It was to help offset that, so with TAC, we're going to have fifteen hundred dollars to do that. So you don't really need that, sorry.
Right. Okay. I don't think we just let that play out.
Number four. Premium rates, the, the first page is, uh, that I gave you to hand out, has the, uh, rates for the medical, page is bill, and the third page is vision.
Is there any summary that you wanted to discuss about the, uh, the difference in those coverages?
Well, there's four tiers, you know, the children, spouse, family, and just employees. And I think two of them are a little bit higher, and two of them are a little bit lower. It kind of plays out. The only difference is, like, the Commissioner's Court hasn't set these rates every year based on self-insured, but guests aren't getting this, but, or actual study, or whatever you want to call it, of what they would be. With TAC, they're setting, this is it. This is what you're trying to hear.
I think that Plan thirteen hundred kind of falls to what we, the charges passed and budget on the sum.
Yeah. That's definitely a number we can plug in and be secure with.
It's real close. I mean, the telephone, the priest, or the matter that we spend on the insurance. I think that'd be something we're probably going to look at next year in the process.
Well, the nice thing is, it's not, it's no longer a moving target. It's, it's a skill and shot.
But, yeah. Tax rates is real comparable to it.
Yeah.
I think you're to the dollar, so.
Okay. Okay, Harold?
The, uh, Ms. Harris, the next two, Mrs. Harris, will have to, administrator for flex spending and dependent care.
So Orlando said that, um, he would recommend, from, from tax perspective, that the county continue with health equity, which is who we're using now for the flex spending and dependent care, because they're just getting up and running with an administrator for that. So he didn't recommend shifting for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Because, like, they haven't had a lot of experience with it. So we currently use health equity, um, as an administrator for that.
And that's no problem keeping them, correct?
I'm sorry.
There's no problem keeping them on?
Keeping who?
The, the health equity, the start of the stream.
From the flex.
That's, that's okay.
I, I don't see any problem.
Okay, that's, yeah.
But I can't, so for sure. If there were any problems, I'll let you know.
Yeah. That's kind of what I'm heading toward. Okay. But dependent care is also included?
Yes. Health equity is also an administrator for dependent care.
All right, Harold?
And the administrator for Cobra coverage?
We currently have discovery benefits, but, um, because y'all elected to move to TAC, all the records and everything, group tag will be over there, and we already have the records for the Cobra administration. I believe that their proposal, and that was a hundred and fifty dollars, um, per employee who takes the Cobra coverage. So, but we very rarely, if ever, have anybody take the Cobra coverage because it's so expensive. But you gotta, you gotta have it. You gotta have the administrator, the paperwork has to be sent out whenever someone is terminated. So, um, the, the move on this would be away from discovery benefits and to the TAC Blue Cross.
So the Cobra could just change across the shield.
It would.
Okay.
Okay, insurance over sixty-five retirees, that's, we have a proposal out of that, we received one from Benestar and one from?
Signos. Not Signos.
Signos. I think we just, that was discussed in the workshop, that not to make too many changes, let's just stay with Benestar. It seems to be working real well, for sure.
Sure. All righty.
Uh, I think Ms. Harris will have to specify start and end date parameter for employees hired and terminated.
Well, the insurance for over sixty-five retirees is?
No, this is for employees.
Okay.
So this is just, um, just to confirm, since we're having a, a big shift in the insurance, the start date and the end date, whenever someone is hired, we currently, um, allow their insurance to begin on the first day of the month following sixty days. So it just makes it, you know, clean break is the first day of the month after they've been here sixty days. The end date, so I would recommend that remaining the same. The end date, we currently end their insurance on the day they're terminated. I had a conversation with Orlando Espinoza about this, and he said, it's so much easier and cleaner if you end their insurance on the end of the month. It's easier for billing, it's easier for payroll, it's easier for everything. So that would be a switch, and I would recommend that with, since it's, you know, fully insured coverage, um, to go to the end of the month, of the termination month.
So start at first, and not end.
The first of the month after sixty days.
Good.
And terminate, so if you, if you terminated the end date, your insurance would end on the thirtieth. So it would just be a little extra for the employees, but, you know.
Well.
Right. But, I mean, that, that is, you know, a decision for you. It's just, uh, administratively, it's just cleaner and easier.
Good.
Especially with as much turnover as we currently have, it's just.
Yeah. Well, give somebody at least coverage until they maybe find another job, for instance. Okay. Okay.
So we're going to continue MetLife voluntary coverages?
We currently have four different lines of coverage with MetLife. We have accident critical illness, hospital indemnity, and legal insurance. Um, we have a number of employees who take advantage of those coverages. Um, so it's a decision of the court whether to continue with those voluntary coverages or not.
A lot, we probably discussed that. We did like to keep that.
And so, I don't know, I don't have it signed.
Yeah.
I know what you're saying.
It, uh, some things that we discussed, if I remember right, were things like end-of-life cost. It's MetLife that would cover, you know, like, it's like insurance policy made for burial and such. That's kind of what we discussed a little bit in the workshop.
I don't know about the burial part.
Well, I mean, you can use the money toward that. I mean, a lot of folks don't have a, they don't go to the funeral home and buy the prepaid policy. That's my point. Yeah. And that was one of the reasons we had looked at, saying, well, if you want to decide whether to continue MetLife voluntary coverage, you can voluntarily. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. There's no cost to the county.
Right.
For that, it's.
It's just an option.
It's a hundred percent, I will bet that, a hundred percent cost to the employee.
It's an option of the employee's choosing. Okay.
Number ten, decide whether to accept tax, uh, quote on the life ADD and voluntary life. I think it was, I'm agrees it's removing, I don't think it's that, they cost that much, does it, for your?
Um, we currently have that coverage with Dearborn. And I believe that tax proposal sort of mirrors the coverage that we currently have. So, um, with the move, with the health insurance, it would make sense to move all this line of coverage.
Okay. Number ten. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Number eleven. Thank you, Bruce. My ADD kicking in today. Any further details or selections not listed above? Did we miss anything, y'all?
Um, the only thing that I can think of right now is with regard to the Plan Source contract. But that is a contract that we have with them, and I have not talked to the county attorney's office about wrapping that up. But my recommendation would be that, um, we, we take a minute and think about the Plan Source contract. So we don't need to move forward with the renewal right now. We do need them to prepare our ten ninety-fives for twenty twenty-two, but Blue Cross will prepare them for twenty twenty-three. Um, also, Blue Cross will be the administrator for all of the additions and terminations, all the policy going forward. And Plan Source currently, you know, handles all that and sends all the files out. So, um, you know, whether it would be worth it to stay with Plan Source to transfer policy with MetLife or not, if you all vote to move forward with MetLife, I don't know. So I just need a minute to, to take a look at that, and see where we stand with Plan Source. But I don't believe that it's, you know, going to be necessary. I think we can go direct to MetLife and, and do the, the policies ourselves, so.
So we're just going to hang on to it for a while, let the dust settle. Is that kind of what we're looking at?
That's exactly right.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion?
Change it up a little bit. I'm going to make a motion, first of all, remove Gallagher as our authorized insurance agent.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I gotta keep up with you here, Bruce. You're changing who?
Remove Gallagher as our authorized insurance agent.
So that's going to go under number eleven?
Eleven, correct.
Yeah.
Number one, accept the thirteen hundred MGS. Number two, add dental and vision with TAC. Number three, no HRA balances or continuation. Four, no rate change on employees or retirees. Five, no flex change. Six, Cobra change to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Seven, sixty-five plus, no change. Number eight, the start will stay the same, the end will change to the end of the month. Nine, continue with MetLife. Ten, accept tax life.
Mm-hmm.
And the Plan Source, we're just going to leave the same, although it wasn't on the list.
Good. All right, we have that motion. Is there any discussion? Okay, motion from Bruce, second Greg. Any further discussion? Everybody good? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may that motion carry. Thank you, Tim. Good discussion, y'all. Thank you. Number ten, from Mr. Douglas, uh, consider and approve the suggestion change in the permit for Cobra. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Tom.
How are you today?
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you. Good seeing you.
Uh, yes, sir. This is an item that is neutral to precincts one and two because of the way you handle the COVID. Uh, this request originates with the foreman of precinct three and the foreman of precinct four. What we're running into, and David, you and I discussed this last week, we end up having to go out in the field because right now we're letting these COVID permits stand for twelve months. We may end up inspecting fifty, sixty, a hundred COVIDs in one day.
Easy.
So, so, uh, you know, Mr. Whitmire's group and giving his hand up there. My department's kind of short on people right now. But, uh, we're working to get those holes plugged. Um, but again, we think this is a good move. Uh, it just takes this and it moves the, the duration, the life of that permit down to ninety days rather than twelve months. And so I would ask you to approve this along with the renewal fee of seventy-five dollars. If they let this, uh, they let this permit lapse, uh, then they're gonna have to come up with seventy-five bucks. Okay?
I know at this point, um, precinct one is, uh, we get a permit for COVID. We're installed in.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So it's not working.
Yeah. Yeah, we may get it quite before we get to something different someday, but not now. Yeah, I, I'm making a motion for the second.
Yeah, a motion from Greg, save for Bruce to approve and further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, David. And don't sit down yet. We got a whole slew of them for you.
We got a number of items here. They're all very general. They're not like insured.
Okay. Number eleven.
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just before we get to the removal of insurance, I just have a quick confirmation so that I know, you know, what we're dealing with. The removal of Gallagher as the, um, agent, the broker, is that effective one-one? Because we have them in place for issues.
Yes.
Yes, that will be effective one-one.
Thank you.
Okay, number eleven. Uh, consider and approve the preliminary plat for the Alley Farms subdivision. What is that, David?
I really like that name. That is, uh, James Collette. James is, uh, Jack Uncle's son-in-law.
Okay, so it'd be a little off of three twenty-one?
Uh, yes, sir. I think it's actually, I put sixteen on here, but I think that's the category of six fourteen.
Yeah.
Um, the Jack Uncle owns five hundred acres up there. And so, uh, James is in the house building business. He is a builder, um, and he's looking at developing this. He's already been on the roads and working up there. Um, upscale lots, one point five acres per lot, uh, custom homes. And so it's gonna be a nice subdivision. It's gonna be very small. But, uh, right now he wants to build a preliminary. LJA has looked at it. There's a total of eighteen lots here.
No new roads.
No new roads.
No new roads.
Okay. So how many total homes?
He's got eighteen lots in section one.
Okay. And how many sections total you think will be?
He has not indicated that, but there's a lot of ground there.
Yeah, there's five hundred acres.
Five hundred acres.
So we could have four hundred homes in there.
Yeah, possibly.
Has he discussed this with the school superintendent?
He has talked to the superintendent. Uh, again, it's so, such a small, uh, group of lots right here. There's gonna have real small.
Does upscale?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is that a motion, Bruce?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion for Bruce, save from Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay.
Decide that it gets even bigger though.
And that motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, consider and approve payment request for charter abstract with an amount of a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. This is a buyout business, David?
Yes, sir. Uh, these are the, this is the buyout program. It's up in the commission office precinct. Uh, we finally have got the dust kicked off of this thing. It's beginning to move. Uh, I talked with the college student last week. Uh, they have forty-one applications they're working on. So this is the first three that have come through. They need to be paid. Uh, and we're gonna ask you to approve a pay request for GLO for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And, uh, this, this pay request is for charter abstract.
Okay. All right. So the first one, number twelve, uh, consider through the payment request for a hundred seventy-nine thousand.
Number twelve is the payment. The next one we get to will be the draw for GLO.
Okay, make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, save from Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thirteen will be, uh, to approve the GLO draw request.
That's correct.
Also make a motion to approve.
Slow down. Just make a, leave behind.
I'm not clicking quite as fast as y'all are talking today, so.
So I will, um, ask a question once she's getting up.
It, it, I'll say that.
Great, okay.
The, uh, these homes that they're buying out, uh, what are we, what are we doing to prevent, um, people from moving in and being?
These houses part of the process of the demolition.
Okay, they still be.
Yes, sir. And then the divisional plan called the property is to be donated to the Texas Department of Land.
Good.
Okay, number thirteen, we have a motion, Bruce, save from Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Most of these you see in the future are gonna be a pay request and a draw request. So, pay it out, we're gonna get it back.
And what makes Dwayne and Kim happy is, is just money that just flows through.
This doesn't stay here long.
No, it doesn't. Pass through cash. Okay. Number fourteen, consider and approve GLO draw request number four in an amount of twenty-four thousand fifty dollars for appraisal fees.
Same, same project. Uh, this is the housing buyout program, and they have, GLO has very, very strict rules for appraisals. And so this is the, uh, payment for the appraisals that have gone on, and the next item will be the draw for the same amount of money. So asking twenty-four thousand and fifty dollars for approval of GLO draw on the outer purpose there.
Yeah, we got a motion from Bruce to approve. Save from David. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Number fifteen, once again, consider that, uh, approve the pay request from Scott Stevenson Associates.
Scott Stevenson is part of the appraisal group, and so money's coming back on the previous action. We're paying the appraiser here on this.
Motion to approve.
Motion from David, save for Bruce to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen, uh, permits inspection. Mr. Douglas, consider and through the replat for Martin Place six one.
Yes, sir. This has already gone through final flat process six weeks, eight weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, what we discovered, we went back and we, I said, we, LJA was to, stood up, and they found some, uh, errors in drainage gap. So the subdivider has resubmitted that, and it has been verified by LJA to be appropriate. And so what they're having to do is file a re-flat on that original.
Okay.
Whether we approve.
I'll have that flat here tonight.
Got a motion, Greg. Was that a second, Bruce? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. All right.
I'm gonna sit down here. I'm gonna let Harold take off. He's mad. And, uh, I got some big ones I'd like to introduce to you in the midst of this presentation.
All right. Uh, for Mr. C on number seventeen, discuss, consider, and select engineering service provider on behalf of the City of Ames to complete project implementation for the American Rescue Plan Act, funding administered by the US Department of Treasury, other federal state agencies.
Okay, that was a, uh, our fault. We all, y'all already awarded the City of Ames. It's really the City of Arc.
Okay.
It's all ARCA funds already been pre-approved and everything. We, we just forgot to change that to City of Arc.
Okay, so we're gonna strike Ames?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so there's, uh,
City of Arc?
So the, uh, you can see on the first page, you can see who the committee was made of. It was four people. Uh, had, they had three firms, engineering firms to look at, and they did their evaluation, scored them, and LJA Engineering was the, uh, highest approved.
Okay. Any discussion?
No, spreading out Ames and that part.
Yeah, a motion from Bruce, save from David. Yeah, just chewed that and all up, didn't it?
Oh, it's got a staple in it.
Full staple.
Sorry.
Got almost that?
Yeah.
About a bit.
It's, uh, it's better to be dealt with.
Almost able to see.
It puts you in soundproof. With all your toys.
At, uh, number seventeen, we had a motion from Bruce to save from David. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen, for Mr. C, discuss, consider, and select engineering service providers to complete application and project-related engineering services for the CBDG. It's Community Development Block Grant MIT MARD, which is your mitigation and then method of distribution, funding administered by the Texas General Land Office.
Okay, this will be the engineering firm that will actually do, I guess, the biggest portion of the work for that grant. Uh, you can see who the, uh, valuation committee was. David Douglas is the chairman. That's, I may want to speak in a minute, but, uh, LJA Engineering was, uh, the highest rated.
David?
For our previous motion, did we name the engineering company?
Yes, LJA.
Okay.
Gentlemen, this is a grant that Jexy's office has been chasing now for, I know, five years.
At least five. Yeah.
And, uh, it, it is for a countywide, uh, drainage study and a plan. And the funding is coming through GLO, and we've been fortunate enough to get some concessions from GLO in some areas that have made this possible. Uh, they no longer require low to moderate income percentage, and so we've been able to move forward with this. As Harold was saying, the review committee, um, Matthew Poston, him, myself, Harold, Angela, um, Amy, and I was sort of scored this thing up that came up with LJA as a recommended engineer. And we have the lady who's gonna be in charge of this with us here today. Don, come on up here.
Yeah, please do.
This is Don Pilcher, and she is a senior engineer with LJA.
Morning, Judge.
Morning, Don. Haven't seen you about a year.
Yes, sir. It's been a little bit, uh, but we're, uh, really pleased to, to have this opportunity to work with you guys. Um, we've talked about it, uh, like David and, and the judge said for a number of years about, you know, the possibility of, of looking at something for the entire county because you are experiencing so very much growth. Um, and you've got a, a major watershed running right through the middle of your county that, that takes on a lot of water from, from up north. Um, it's really important to be able to, to have a holistic view of your county. So, uh, we appreciate the, the vote of confidence and really look forward to.
This one was kind of unprecedented, if you play.
Very much so.
Yeah, we, we had tried for years, but this is a twenty-one point three million dollar grant.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, of course, there was four hundred eighty-eight million that was allocated to, uh, actually to contiguous counties. Heritage County, uh, through the HGAC group, and that four hundred eighty-eight million, we got twenty-one point three out of that. And what we had always aspired to have happen, and we had worked on this starting five, six years ago, was just get two and a half million dollars to get a study done, because there's never been a study done for the entire county. And once we got that, we figured maybe, just maybe, we could get a grant down the road that would prove up or be proven by the study that it had merit, needed a plan, a total plan, comprehensive plan for the entire county for drainage. And our anticipation was, since the unprecedented growth is one factor, and our zero impact that we require on developments, when you have contiguous developments, how can you always guarantee that there'll be zero impact? As it's still flows, sheet flows, that all these neat words that y'all use. So it, it all came down to, here's the money, and they're wagging it out here like a banana. And we're saying, okay, but our LMI is about forty-four percent for the county, but the LMI they're requesting is fifty-one percent. We're not there yet, okay? And it, uh, what we did was we went back to HGAC and, uh, the contiguous counties that had the same thing happening to them that is happening in Liberty County uh, requested more or less a variance in the use of the funds. And once we actually had the arguments all about it, that a good probably six months of, uh, meetings, and I'm talking about town hall meetings all the way down to uh, subpoenaed discussion, even in HGAC board meetings, uh, the vote was finally taken, and the, uh, acceptance was made for the variance, so we could use this money for planning purposes. It was a hallelujah moment, y'all. I mean it.
Well, anytime you've kept something for five years.
Yeah.
There's an immediate sense of gratification when you can finally make it come together.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've always had these thirty thousand foot views of Liberty County. This study's gonna give us a two hundred foot view. And, uh, so we've got structured a lot of things yet. We're still in discussions with, uh, with, um, what we're actually looking for.
Yeah.
But this is gonna be something that's gonna be very, very good for Liberty County.
You know, our, our anticipation is this, and Greg and I took a boat ride after Harvey. Remember that? Over an airboat over around Dezada. Actually saw a bobcat swimming. It was a whole Dezada bobcat was swimming. And, uh, it was right off of what? Baptiste Creek, back in there, and, and Greg even mentioned, you know, there was a study done years ago, uh, probably twenty years ago, and just the, uh, the cost for mitigation on that study alone was thirty-five million dollars. And that was twenty years ago plus.
Well, don't, don't get confused here because there's no mitigation.
No.
In this, it's purely studied.
Purely studied.
Well, at least it tells me which way the water's going.
There you go.
Well, that's just it. When somebody calls you and says, I, and going across the street and say, no, it's not. It, uh, but the whole point is this, with developers coming in, our, this is what our goal is, is to get a study completed, move on to the plan, adopt the plan here in court. Uh, the commissary's court would adopt the plan. Get a Liberty County Drainage District formed from that. It would be operated off of funds, not adware and taxes. That's our goal, is not to use adware and taxes for this service. It would be, uh, funds derived from developers, and these would be impact fees. I mean, they're gonna pay them anyway. These impact fees, and I'm, you know, I don't have this dear and wonderful feeling about it all, uh, developers in this to make money. And that's, the impact fees be passed on the consumer. That's to whomever they sell the lots to. So why should the county pay these funds in this matter for mitigation when the developers are the ones making the money off of? And that might be a commercial, industrial, or residential developer. And so we have a plan now that we can move forward with. Thank you, Don. I appreciate y'all stepping up to the plate to help us with it, and, and really all the, all the help that y'all given us, you know, over the years, just talking to Toby, uh, Davis, Alan Sims, company, and you, and everybody about, how can we do this? And like I said, this is, this is one of those little kind of hallelujah moments for us to see it happen.
Judge, we certainly look forward to, to giving you, your county, a plan that you can build out, um, over many years as, as development occurs. And, you know, your, your work, your YOFS work to, to get to a point where this can be done, um, through the concessions with the GLOs. It's just can't be overshadowed. Um, before I go, I want to introduce John Brown, who's here with me.
John, good seeing you.
John Brown is gonna play a huge part in this. He's got. Is gonna play a huge part in this, he's got great relationships with FEMA, I'm so, we're really looking forward to getting started on this.
And then I had a lot of discussion with John about this too in the past, about how to make it work, even back to the days of uh Jeff Tate with uh HGAC, and he said, yeah, we can do it, but it's gonna take a while. And he wasn't kidding, that was five years ago, it took a while, yeah.
Harold, I think what you're looking for here is a selection of LGA as the engineering firm, and then permission to develop a contract with him, is that correct?
Okay, so number eighteen, discuss, consider select engineering service provider to complete the application of project-related engineering services for the CD BG MIT mod. Funding administered by the Texas General Land Office. Any further discussion? Entertaining motion?
Make a motion to accept LGA as an engineering firm, say on, thanking.
Got a motion from Bruce, say from Greg to approve, all three say aye. Thank you, David. Number nineteen, discuss, consider select administrator, administration project delivery service providers to complete application of project-related administrative services for the CD BG MIT mod funding, administered by the Texas General Land Office, this same purpose, refer.
Okay, same, same committee, same uh project, uh this is to help the county administer uh the grant. And uh Grant Works was, scored the highest by the committee, and we also, you know, basically ninety-nine point five percent of the twenty-one million will be able to go to engineer statement. So it's a big, good, pretty good.
Pretty, pretty good little rate right there.
Good proposal.
Alright.
Then we have uh Kelly Oden.
Yes.
Here with us.
Kelly?
Hey, Kelly, she is with Grant Works, she's local rep in this area, you know, we've been working with them now for
Yeah.
So very excited about this project, I wanted to meet Kelly. She and I have taken a lot of contact with each other, uh Miranda Hill.
Miranda Harris.
Miranda Harris?
Yes.
Um Miranda's kind of the, she's the VP in the company, so she's handling our accounts on my.
Miranda's head over all the AP riders, so the next step would be that we would have a transition call to introduce the county to the signed AP rider, and then they'll follow that up, there is still meeting with the engineer for it's in the county.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Entertaining motion? Motion from Greg?
There were further recommendations?
Grant Works.
Grant Works. That was a second, right Bruce?
Yes.
All three say aye. Likewise nay, that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. I'm going to. Alright, number twenty, uh Mr. C, can, uh discuss, consider and approve recommendations to award bid number twenty twenty, twenty-two twenty, Culverts for various precincts.
Okay, this is our annual uh bid for Culverts. Uh we've set out the four, Wilson Culverts, Delta, West, Ford Line, and Culvert, we received two back. Wilson Culverts and Culvert, Culvert, Culvert is the current one we have now, uh they were the lowest bid. This would be for one year, starting today, if you approve it, and then options to renew next year, it'll maintain the same price as which we had that on last year, but it didn't, they wanted to raise prices, which is what they did on this too. Basically, young one-year contract.
Okay.
Where is this Wilson Culvert company at? Uh It seemed like, it seemed like it says LCARS. Wardline normally bids, I don't know what I did this year, it showed they received it. Well, last year we had a lot of problem out of Culverts about getting, I think everybody had supply, man. But the year before, we had a problem for the year before. Yeah, yeah, like I say, everybody's having issues. Uh make a motion to go with the lowest bidder.
Yeah, okay, got a motion from Bruce, say Greg, go with lowest bid, all three say aye. Likewise nay, that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Number twenty-one for Mr. C, discuss, consider and approve use of five hundred thousand dollars for precincts two, three, and four, totaling one and a half million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act funds for funding of road materials.
Okay, uh our road material bids will be up October twenty-fifth, I think it is, twenty-sixth. Uh so we'll start the bid process annual like we normally do, we, we bid it by state law, but to allow uh y'all to use some of the ARCA funds for road materials, this year we'll have to do the state law and include the federal funding requirements that ARCA requires, so it'll be a little bit more of a bid, but we want to get started on that soon as we can.
Discussion, I doubt there's gonna be much discussion on this.
I ain't making a motion, I'm precinct one, I mean this. Let me say, there is, there's a question on there, uh David asked me. He, he has been using the asphalt overlay contracts, and I know we discussed that with uh, we had a couple meetings with Grant Works last couple years, we kind of discussed that with them, that they think that's gonna be okay, but what we're trying to do is do an asphalt overlay bid, federal funding requirements, that he can use that.
Yeah. Alright, we got it.
Make a motion, we're approved, and then we thank precinct one for sacrifice.
Got a motion Greg, say from David, uh to approve number twenty-one, all three say aye.
Wasn't a sacrifice, they took me under the bus.
That motion passes, thank you gentlemen. Number twenty-two for Mr. C, consider and approve solicitation of bid number twenty-three oh one. Road materials funded by the American Rescue Plan Act and the Road and Bridge Fund.
Okay, I jumped ahead, I really want to stand with this one.
Yeah.
Another one would just approve these in part. Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion from Bruce, say from Greg to approve, all three say aye. Likewise nay, that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. And we're not leaving you out, okay? Number twenty-three, uh discuss, consider and approve use of five hundred thousand dollars for precinct one for the American Rescue Plan Act funds for funding construction of a metal building and equipment shed. Bruce, you want to tell us about where your shed's gonna be?
Eighty by a hundred foot building, two offices and stuff over there in my uh west section or off fourteen oh nine, better serve the Dayton area. So I've already got bids, so I think Harold will be going back out for bids on, on it. So I've, in lieu of my road material, I'm using the money.
Okay. Need a motion in a second. Motion from Greg, say from David to approve, all three say aye. Likewise nay, that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Number twenty-four, for Mr. C, consider and approve solicitation of bid number twenty-three oh two. Construction of metal building and rest, and equipment shed at Road and Bridge number one in Dayton, funded by American Rescue Plan, and the Road and Bridge Fund.
Like, like the minister said, we, we got a quote uh through uh Co-op Choice Partners, just because it's starting point, see what was in the calls. But now that we've decided to use the RPA funds, it's probably gonna be bid out, so this, this will be our second bid of the new year.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion from David, say from Greg to approve, and all three say aye. Likewise nay, that motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Number twenty-five, uh for Mr. Poston, county attorney, consider and approve the agreement converting the Sheriff's Department net motion licenses to the SaaS licenses, and adding additional SaaS licenses. Sheriff, get a
I think it's Catherine.
Catherine?
I wish I could tell you something about this, but I think this has technology, and that's not my baby whip.
Knock us on soon, if you want to ask him a question.
Gavin Knox, you stood here there with us?
You're going to the cloud, right? You're using cloud services, is that what this is about?
He's not talking.
He's not talking. Billy?
Will?
Can we just Can we table this, so many of them are I, I mean, I'll just look at it, I can send information there, say I want to score.
Which is, what do y'all want to do?
I know it's about missing licenses that they had, that they have, there's like fifty missing licenses for the pro officers
Yeah.
to make the stuff go through, and they, hang on a second. Yes, sir? It's not letting him talk, he said, this is Captain.
Is he muted?
No.
He said you're not muted, no, please, don't, don't table it until you can talk. Okay.
Make a motion to table.
This table, bye.
Okay, got a motion to table from Bruce. Say from David, all three say aye. Likewise nay, we'll come back to this again, Sheriff. Uh number twenty-six, uh from Ms. McCarty, uh consider and approve the endem to the interlocal agreement between Liberty County and Hospital District number one, effective number the first twenty eighteen. For the extension of the lease at six twenty-four Fannin in Liberty, that's the, the engineering office. And uh, yeah, we want to hang there a little bit longer, but the bet went up a little bit, and we knew it was, but they were generous. Uh they had requested an increase back in March, and I explained that uh our budget doesn't start till October first, so they were very generous in, in waiting, so uh I appreciated approval on this.
Make a motion, Joe, for
Sir. Motion from Bruce, say from David, all three say aye. Alrighty, now, before we go. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a budget. What do y'all say? Well, I gotta thank a lot of folks, Kim, your office, Catherine, y'all at your office with Matthew, Dwayne, you and Angela, it's uh
Yeah, I'm like, I'm like, calling out all the hours that Angela has had to put in to make this budget go professional.
Yes. I mean, this one, you can get on, pull up on the internet and read it, and it's, it's real easy to read.
I think our, the parents of our footage are doing the terrible, doing the
Yeah, but uh yeah, I thank y'all so much, it was really, really, really appreciated. Alright. Motion from Bruce to adjourn, say from David, all three say aye. Likewise nay.